Erby? Rebecca with Peace Institute?
Yes.
Okay, good. And Emily Rubino?
The Bulletin of Atomic Science Scientists reports that the doomsday clock is at 100 seconds to midnight, which is the closest nuclear warfare that they've ever estimated. This is a way to warn world leaders and civilians alike. Youth are taught that the use of nuclear weapons ended with World War II. The former Soviet Union and US had a nuclear arms race, and with the fall of the Berlin Wall, all of that is behind us. Prior to starting my position at IPPNW, I was not aware of the bleak future that we are currently facing. I too believed the pretense that this is an issue of the past. It is my job, along with many others in the room, to educate. We deserve the right to know that our cities, universities, and banks are investing in these weapons that will inevitably change our world as we currently know it. With that being said, I am not alone. The next generation is becoming more and more aware of the “hidden dangers” that nuclear weapons pose. And we deserve the right to have faith in our local, state, and federal leaders to do everything in their power to put an end to these weapons of mass destruction. I am doing my part to educate all people, and specifically the rising generation, on the current dangers of nuclear weapons. As a young person and nuclear disarmament professional, I urge you to do your part and to pass Resolution 976 and Introduction 1621 to ensure a necessary step forward to shifting the world toward being nuclear-free. It is imperative that youth be aware of the imminent danger that nuclear weapons pose for our future, and just as importantly, that they know we still have the opportunity and power to shift this future. By passing these pieces of legislation, you are showing me and countless other youth, whether or not they know it, that you are actively invested in our future. We are prepared to bring progress into this world, but we are going to need to ensure that there is a livable world to bring progress to. On behalf of young people throughout New York and beyond, we thank you in advance for using your platform to take action for our survival. Thank you.
Molly, what's your last name?
McGinty.
Did you submit written testimony?
I just emailed it.
Oh, okay, fine. I just wanted to be sure.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Jasmine McKay. I'm a DJ, producer, and musical artist, and former student. I'll be reading the testimony of Anoni Hegary. Here we go. “I'm an English-born singer, composer, and visual artist who moved to Manhattan in 1990 to study at NYU. All these years later, New York is still my home. In 2016, I became the second openly transgender person nominated for an Academy Award for Best Original Song for Manta Ray in the film Racing Extinction, a film about the mass extinction of species we are now undergoing. I say these things to state the obvious: New York is a city of artists. I am one of thousands of artists who call this city home. I am one of thousands who say with our work, 'Stop extinction, stop war.' Stating the obvious in a post-truth society is becoming a noble task, and so too this legislation, stating the obvious that we must act to rid ourselves of the threat of nuclear war and radioactive violence. I am grateful to all our City Council members who have supported this legislation, which gives me the opportunity to share how my life and my work have been touched personally by the nuclear age. A few years ago, I was asked to write a song for a film about the Great Barrier Reef called Coral Rekindling Venus by the artist Lynette Walworth. Lynette was making a new film in collaboration with a group of Aboriginal Martu women elders. She asked me to accompany her to the Western Australian desert to meet this community and see if I could be in some way a part of the work she envisaged. I had the honor to spend some time witnessing and befriending a group of Martu elders who taught me to see things from a much bigger point of view. Visiting them was a heart-opening and life-changing experience for me. To be with these women was deeply inspiring, and it left me with the sense that I would do whatever I could to help them. There was something familiar about the Martu. They had the tremendous presence that reminded me of my own family and of the women from the hills of Donegal, Ireland that I descend from. There's a sense of inseparableness of body, spirit, and landscape that I recognize from my own grandmother and aunties. I found myself, as a student of the Martu people, in a blessed moment of circumstance. As time went on, I began to understand the nature of the struggle that they were in the grips of. Two multinational companies had worked with the government and managed to acquire a large parcel of Martu territory with the goal of creating a uranium mine there. The eldest Martu women banded together and launched a years-long offensive to halt the mining threat. They began working on giant paintings of their land and sharing them with museums across Australia to bring attention to their plight. I wanted to help in any way I could. I performed a concert in Tasmania at the Dark Mofo Festival and donated the proceeds to create a fund to support the Martu in their brave work confronting the mining giants, Kamiko and Mitsubishi. We appeared on a Q&amp;A, a national talk program, to discuss the crisis with leading politicians. The Martu staged a 10-day walk across country from their—
You may continue, sir.
Okay. “From their remote community to the site of the proposed uranium mine. I joined them on that trek, which culminated in the ceremony between the structures left by the mining exploration crew in the middle of a pristine and majestic desert that was bursting with life. What I found most impressive about the circle of women was their sense of presence and integrity and patience. I found dignity and perseverance and intense intuitive wisdom. They're one of the few indigenous groups that has almost unbroken connection to the land. They weren't radically disrupted until after World War II, when the Australian government sought to clear them from their land so they could begin nuclear testing. Elders in the community recount that, as children, they saw a giant cloud in the sky and being told it must be a sign from God, and then the kangaroos dying around them and thinking God was offering them a feast and giving praise for their good fortune. Sometimes it seems that corporations have little regard for those who live in proximity to their projects. The fight to halt the proposed uranium mine at Kintyre has been fought since the 1980s, and still there is no assurance that the fight is over. If built, an operating uranium mine will irreversibly contaminate the environment with radioactive waste and mill trailings and threaten water security as vital water resources are located near the proposed mine. The health of the people and some 28 threatened species that live in the precious bioregion will be forever compromised. People have asked me, 'Why this mine? Why these people?'" While a sequence of events led me to this particular place and people, this one place represents the global operation of uranium mining, which very often adversely affects indigenous people across the planet. Why this story from Australia for New York City Council, told by an English-born artist of Irish descent who calls her home Manhattan? There, that is it, Manhattan, the Manhattan Project. Because nuclear weapons were born here, every uranium mine that has opened since owes its legacy in some part to New York City. And although the thousands of tons of uranium stored in Manhattan and Staten Island and elsewhere primarily came from the brutally racist Belgian Congo, the Manhattan Project paved the way for every uranium mine ever exploited. The mine at Kintyre in Western Australia threatens not just the local environment, but offers the potential to unleash havoc across our planet. Some of the Martu grieve that, as guardians of their land, any uranium taken from their Martu is Martu responsibility. Any pain inflicted on the world using that uranium would be spiritually tied to a failure of the Martu to keep the poison in the ground. It's heartbreaking. Mining the raw material for nuclear bombs and/or nuclear energy, a fuel source that cannot change the course of climate chaos, must stop forever. As a New Yorker, I expect that clarion call from my City Council, especially our city, which has so much to lose in the event of any kind of nuclear disaster, whether it be by war, facility, collapse, or terrorism. New York City has cultural and political capital to spend. If we aren't spending that now, as we lurch towards and away from the cliff of further war in the Middle East, the cliff of climate chaos, the cliff of social injustice, when would we deem best to act? If not now, when? What further madness must we witness? What will it take? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hello, Councilmembers and honored guests. My name is Rebecca Erby, and I am a long supporter of a nuclear-free NYC. I am the founder and executive director of Peak Institute, an international peace education nonprofit and NGO, which holds special consultative status with the Economic and Social Council at the United Nations. I founded Peak Institute in 2016 in response to the five years I lived in Japan, specifically after visiting Hiroshima on a long weekend. I was so taken aback by what I learned from a Hibaksha, a survivor of the Hiroshima bombing. The American narrative of Japan bombed us, we bombed them back and won the war, was completely turned on its head when seeing the true impact of these inhumane weapons. The humanitarian effect of nuclear weapons can no longer be ignored. For 75 years since the bombing, the survivors, their children, and their children's children have struggled to live on, afflicted by delayed effects and the anxiety about possible effects of radiation. How have we prohibited the use, development, production, and possession of biological and chemical weapons, landmines, and cluster ammunition? But yet, nuclear weapons, the most destructive of all, are still not only legal, they are touted as necessary to keep us all safe. How can a weapon which can destroy the entire planet be seen as safe? As said before, on January 23rd, 2020, the Bulletin of Atomic Scientists moved the doomsday clock to 100 seconds before midnight. We're now not measuring how close the world is to catastrophe in minutes or hours, we're down to seconds. It's the closest the doomsday clock has ever been, since the clock was created in 1947. Now is the time to take action. We have done enough talking for the last 75 years. It's shameful it's taken us this long to get to this point. As an educator, I know that it is vitally important to stand with the youth of today. Indeed, it is the young people worldwide who are standing up and demanding action. How many more generations will be held hostage by the imminent danger of weapons whose sole purpose is the destruction of all life? How can this not be an international issue? Nuclear war is not limited to the countries involved, it's a human issue. The entire planet is affected. New York City has the opportunity to be at the forefront of this international movement. The fastest and most effective way to take action is by voting yes on Resolution 976 and Bill 11621. It is time to stop investing in our mutual destruction and start investing in and supporting our future. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. It's an absolute pleasure to be here, and I am a New Yorker who lives in New York, Tribeca area, District 1. So I'm gonna have to nudge my Councilmember Margaret Chin to kind of chime in with you guys a little more. I think we're here today— My name is Paul Miller, aka DJ Spooky, and I'm a writer, artist, and musician. My books are generally with MIT Press, and I work extensively in a global electronic music community. I think we're here today to kind of look at the merits of how common sense things can affect us in everyday life. The 20th century was a century haunted by what I like to call the law of unexpected effects: Teflon, asbestos, and so on. If you start to think about how those affect consumer life in an everyday context, the unintended consequences of those will linger for generations. Yet, the scale of human—kind of construction of materials like uranium and plutonium will actually linger far longer than our entire civilization or as our species has been on this planet. So, as an artist who's worked with universities like Columbia University, or who has shown with galleries in the gallery district on 20th Street, you can actually remember that most of the plutonium and other kind of radioactive materials that were stored there lingers over the High Line, lingers over the West Side Highway where I go jogging. And above all, it actually creates a serious tension with how we think about the future. So it's with a great sort of joy that I'm seeing that the panel has a bulletproof veto over the idea of disinvesting in these kinds of materials. So, I want to just kind of earn early to respect everyone's time, and kind of just go from the viewpoint of common sense and making money and investing money, they're not mutually exclusive. And it's a real pleasure to see a common sense approach to saying that we can actually have our money be put to better use than it's currently being done, and I salute you. Thank you. By the way, I'll submit my written statement later.
Okay, thank you very much. Within 48 hours, okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mari Nowe. I'm a lawyer, I'm an activist, I'm a mother in Jackson Heights. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to pass on the message of peace from Hibakshas who have repeatedly appealed to the world to realize the world without nuclear weapons. Mr. Seiji Yamaguchi, who was only 14 at the time of the Nagasaki bombing, appealed at the UN in 1982 that, "For the sake of the people of the world, those yet to be born, the children and atomic bomb survivors like us, we cannot forgive the suffering or death of even one person in atomic bombing." Mr. Sumitara Taniguchi, who suffered from various health issues from the bombing, said in the city in 2015 that "nuclear arms are weapons of the devil, which will not allow humans to live nor die as humans." Mr. Tomi Tanaka, a Hibaksha from Nagasaki, emphasized in New York City in 2015 that "the policy of nuclear deterrence is against humanity." He made a point that no state will be spared and its existence will be threatened by a use of a nuclear weapon, even if the use of such weapon is to protect the survival of the state. Now, the escalation of the arms race promoted by the current administration and the cosmoodonizing and developing nuclear weapons present a considerable expense for our nation. And it is important for us, New York City, to deliver a firm message to the world that we need to set our priorities right. Instead of investing in nuclear weapons, production, and maintenance, the real priorities should be to fight against poverty, to promote peace, to improve our education healthcare systems, and to fight against the climate crisis. Let's stop investing for the destructive false sense of security, but instead, let's invest for hope that our children can live in, which is a path toward a nuclear-free world. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone.
Well, good evening now.
Good evening now, yes. When I wrote it, I thought it's still the afternoon. My name is Emily Rubino. I'm the Director of Policy and Outreach at Peace Action New York State. As Sally mentioned before, Peace Action's roots date back to 1957, long before I was born, out of the National Committee for the Same Nuclear Policy and the Nuclear Freeze Movement. 63 years later, we're still part of the anti-nuclear struggle and working to bring it to the next generation. We currently have 25 campus chapters across the state, with about seven of those just right here in New York City. Like me, our students were born in a post-Cold War era, not knowing a world in which nuclear weapons have not existed. We will, however, continue to fight for a nuclear-free future. Our students are greatly concerned by nuclear issues and understand both the economic impact, the environmental impact, and the humanitarian impact that these weapons have. As the semester is just getting started, our students weren't able to join us today, but I'm here to represent them in their voices and experiences, as well as my own. When I was in 5th grade, I remember reading the story of Sadako and the Thousand Paper Cranes. Years later, while in college, with a passion for social justice and a strong desire to change US foreign policy, I began interning at Peace Action New York State. Through what went from a semester-long internship to a full-time organizing position, I have had the opportunity to hear testimony from Japanese and Korean Hibaksha intent on sharing their stories and seeing an end to nuclear weapons in their lifetime. I have had the incredible opportunity to twice visit Hiroshima for the World Conference Against Atomic and Hydrogen Bombs, and to walk through the Peace Memorial Museum, where some of the cranes that Sadako folded while in the hospital receiving treatment for leukemia are memorialized next to other mementos documenting the horrific bombings and the day and years that followed. That we even consider possessing and utilizing these weapons is an insult to the memory of those who suffered in these bombings, as well as the victims of our nuclear tests. As citizens of the only country to ever use nuclear weapons in combat, we have a unique responsibility to ensure they will never be used again. I'd also just like to quickly share a personal testimony from one of our students, Carly Brownell, who's a student organizer at Manhattan College up in the Bronx. She wrote, "Nuclear disarmament is an issue that is very close to my heart because, as a child, I lived on the Navajo Reservation in Shiprock, New Mexico. My mom was a doctor in the public health service, and she was stationed there at a local hospital. Where I lived in Shiprock is directly downwind from the Nevada test site, where the United States government tested hundreds of nuclear weapons during the 1940s and 50s, and the radiation still affects people to this day. As a kid, I knew a lot of people who suffered health defects from the radiation from these tests, and as I got older and learned more about the issue, I realized that I myself also carry this harmful radiation in my body. I have been passionate about this issue for years because I never want anyone else to be in the same situation that I am, and so I have done countless class presentations on the subject and will talk to anyone about it who will listen. However, it has always felt so personal that I never thought to get actively involved in campaigns against nuclear weapons. This changed this past fall when I learned about the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. I urge the City Council to adopt these resolutions." This semester, Carly and the Manhattan chapter are organizing an Anti-Nuclear Weapons Week on campus to continue to raise awareness on the dangers of nuclear weapons and nuclear testing, and are also working to divest the Manhattan College pensions from weapons manufacturers. The bills before the City Council today set a powerful precedent for not just other cities and countries across the world, but for universities as well. If we ever want to see an end to these horrific weapons, we must stop investing in the companies responsible for manufacturing and modernizing them, and commit to the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to this panel. We deeply appreciate you coming in to give testimony today. So, if there's anybody in the room who still—who has not filled out a form but wants to speak, now is your last chance to do so. Otherwise, this will be our last panel. Dr. Kathleen Sullivan, Michelle Peppers, and June Tonno, John Burrows, and Molly Nolan.
My name is John Burrows. I am Executive Director of the New York City-based Lawyers Committee on Nuclear Policy and a resident of this city. At the outset, I want to affirm that the Lawyers Committee on Nuclear Policy supports the adoption of the proposed resolution and bill and offers our assistance in implementation of the measures. Furthermore, we are prepared to work to engage the New York City legal community in implementation and in related activities to make New York City visible in reducing and eliminating nuclear weapons worldwide. Board members of my group and I have in the past worked through the New York City Bar Association on Nuclear Arms Control and Disarmament. Personally, in the 1990s, I worked as an attorney to defend and support Oakland, California's nuclear weapon-free ordinance. This City Council, in its 1983 Resolution Number 364 proclaiming New York City a nuclear weapon-free zone, this council observed that, quote, "common discourse treats nuclear weapons and nuclear war as wagering chips for international politics, instead of as the instruments of the most horrible death." Over the decades since then, nuclear arms have gone from being a phenomenon thought of as somehow outside the realm of law to a military technology that, like others, is considered subject to the requirements of law. Details can be found in my longer written statement submitted by email. But just let me note quickly a couple of points. In 1996, the International Court of Justice concluded that threat or use of nuclear weapons is generally illegal. Then, in 2017, the Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons considers in its preamble that any use of nuclear weapons would be contrary to international humanitarian law. Just the next year, the UN Human Rights Committee released a general comment stating that "the threat or use of weapons of mass destruction, in particular nuclear weapons, which are indiscriminate in effect and of a nature to cause destruction of human life on a catastrophic scale, is incompatible with respect for the right to life and may amount to a crime under international law." As I say, see my written submission for more about all this. The measures under consideration for adoption by the council would be a major step to advance the understanding that nuclear arms are morally and legally indefensible.
Thank you. I see we have been joined by Cynthia Medansky. Cynthia, would you like to go next? Okay.
Hi, I'm— Thank you very much for this session. It's so important that it's happening, and thank you to the organizers of it. I am a filmmaker, and I'm working on a very extensive film right now called North American Apilogue: The Moral Tale of the Effects of the Nuclear Industry on All 50 States, visiting nuclear power plants and sites of contamination, downwinders, every part of the nuclear fuel cycle, so that there'll be also oral histories about this incredible catastrophe that has been created and is sustained. So this is a very important work that you're doing right now in New York, and New York, of course, should be one of the leaders in America. So I wanted to read a quote by Arundhati Roy, a writer that I respect. "It is such a supreme folly to believe that nuclear weapons are deadly only if they're used. The fact that they exist at all, their presence in our lives, will wreak more havoc than we can begin to fathom. Nuclear weapons pervade our thinking, control our behavior, administer our societies, inform our dreams. They bury themselves like meat hooks deep in the base of our brains. They are purveyors of madness."
Thank you very much, and let's go here.
My name is Molly Nolan. I'm a recently retired professor of Cold War history at NYU and a longtime activist with Brooklyn for Peace, a 36-year-old peace and social justice organization from the other side of the river. There are three main reasons the City Council should support these very important measures. First, nuclear weapons are infinitely more powerful and numerous now than they were when they were used for the first and only time by the United States 75 years ago. Then they caused horrific death and destruction in Hiroshima and Nagasaki. The potential costs of a nuclear war now are much greater, and yet we still have the same madness we had during the Cold War, when government officials and some military ones claimed that nuclear war was thinkable and winnable. Second, as long as nuclear weapons are not banned and such a ban is not observed by all powers, both those who have weapons and those who don't, the number of nuclear powers and weapons will increase. During the Cold War, we learned that efforts to limit the number and types of such weapons would and were passed now and again, but such limits were repeatedly violated. We're learning that sad lesson again now, as the US and Russia both move to modernize and expand their nuclear weapons of all sorts, claiming that the other state has violated treaties limiting them from so doing. And as long as states want new and ostensibly ever better nuclear weapons, businesses will continue to produce them for profits are to be made. In the long run, only total nuclear disarmament will end this vicious cycle. In the short run, maybe at least some corporations can be dissuaded from producing such weapons if governments like that of New York divest their pensions funds from them. Third, nuclear weapons are very, very expensive. Both the past and present nuclear arms race cost the US billions of dollars and contributed significantly to making military spending account for 60% of destructionary government spending. If we continue to spend this money on nukes and wars, we can't have the things that we desperately need: more housing, better schools, improved healthcare, rebuilt infrastructure, and a Green New Deal. So I urge the Council to support these very important measures and make New York an example for other cities. Thank you.
Next, please.
I'm Michelle Peppers with the Ribbon International, a UN NGO. First, I want to acknowledge Councilman Perkins. He worked with us in 2004 with Mayors for Peace during a UN Nuclear Weapons Conference and the New York City Council, and they proclaimed it April 8th, 2004, as Nuclear Weapons Abolition Day. The Ribbon is a peace art project started in 1982 by Justine Merritt from the US. started in 1982 by Justine Merritt from the US. She had been to the memorial park in Hiroshima on a pilgrimage. When arriving home, it came to her to create an embroidered cloth panel, calling it a ribbon, which would represent the people she loved and cared about. The theme of the ribbon, "What I Cannot Bear to Think Of as Lost Forever in a Nuclear War". On August 4th, 1985, the 40th anniversary of the bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki, over 15 miles, 15 miles of ribbons were joined together at the Pentagon, and ribbons surrounded the A-bomb memorial in Hiroshima as well. Plus, there were tables and tables of ribbons that were not even used. Ribbon panels came from all over the US and many countries around the world with the hope and prayers that nuclear weapons would never be used again. It is the same hope and prayers today, and I'm taking from your intro of your resolution. As New Yorkers devote their careers to making life better for their fellow New Yorkers, how in good conscience, my quote, can anyone, now quote, assist in underwriting the catastrophic loss of life and environmental ruin that would result from nuclear conflict? Okay, people creating ribbons find common ground with each other, and they're joined together in interfaith group, interfaith prayer services, schools, organizations, places of worship have created the ribbons.
Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you. My name is June Tannen and also from the Ribbon International. And if the New York City becomes no-nuke city, it will be the first major event. We are planning to have another ribbon event because this year is 75th anniversary of Hiroshima and Nagasaki. We are planning to start quiet march from Library 42nd and to Dagahama Shod Plaza, wishing to no-nuke world. And after all our statements, if mayor and council members still doubt we might need nuclear or do we really need nuclear-free city, I strongly recommend them to visit one of the museums in Hiroshima and Nagasaki. If they see it and ask themselves, do we really want to have this tragedy to New York City? If really we want to this tragedy to our children, grandchildren, grand-grandchildren, I'm sure their answer is only one: No, we don't need no-nuclear. Thank you.
Dr. Sullivan?
Thank you. Well, that was a wonderful segue for me because I just want to start by saying that with Robert Krunkwurst and other volunteers with the Hibakusha Stories Project here in New York, we've brought more than 100 atomic bomb survivors to more than 40,000 New York City high school students. And those testimonies that you heard from Shigeko, Setsuko, are real-life people that have had effects on real-life young New Yorkers, such as my former student and spiritual daughter Jasmine Infinity, who was just speaking before us. I have to say, there have been many times today that I've been moved to tears when Johnny Brooklands sat and said that he was around uranium barrels that were hot and that that had been left in Chelsea, where my husband was a child growing up, that there was radiation from the Manhattan Project in residential areas in New York City that we weren't handling, and then that the mayor's office dares to come to this august committee and say that they don't have the expertise for advisory committee? Look at this room. This city is filled with experts that would love to be a part of such a committee. Would it be cost? Would it be jurisdiction? Would it be, you know, this is an international issue? Obviously. The central theme in the brilliant, moving testimony that we have heard today is this: We need to act before it is too late. We need to act because it is our responsibility. We need to act because nuclear weapons were born in this city. We need to act because right at this moment, everything that we love and everyone that we love is threatened by the existence of nuclear weapons. And I like to challenge Mayor de Blasio because just last week, at the Brooklyn Academy of Music, where Dr. King was honored, Mayor de Blasio said, "The thing that people forget about Dr. King's legacy is that he was against militarism." And Mayor de Blasio talked about Dr. King's triple evils: the evil of racism, the evils of poverty, the evils of militarism, all that are intricately connected. And so, it's very rich to hear from the mayor's office that they can't support this in the same week that he spoke very clearly about Dr. King's work against militarism, racism, and poverty. So I would say to Mr. Mayor, it's 100 seconds to midnight. Where is your critique of militarism a week later? If you believe in what you say you admire of Dr. King's legacy, you should be working with all of us to use your power to proudly support the disarmament legislation that is before us. When Dr. King was questioned about peace and civil rights, and I'll finish with this, you know, this is one of, just such one of many profound things that that sage man said. He said, "For those of us who are telling me to keep my mouth shut, I can't do that. I am against segregation at lunch counters and I'm not going to segregate my moral concerns. And we must know on some positions, cowardice asks the question, 'Is it safe?'" Expediency asks the question, 'Is it politic?'" Vanity asks the question, 'Is it popular?'" But conscience asks the question, 'Is it right?'" And there are times when you must take a stand that is neither safe nor politic nor popular, but you must do it because it is right. And this legislation is the right thing to do. There can be no doubt in this chamber that now, the urgent now, as Dr. King implored to us, is the time to do the right thing, to vote in favor of Resolution 976 and Bill 1621, and not to have this buried in committee. And, you know, I just want to close by really acknowledging the leadership of Councilmember Drum. Your enlightened leadership, you're bringing us forward from writing the letter to the Comptroller, requesting that we divest our pension funds, and shepherding this through to the committees. It's just been such a joy. And I learned so much today from everybody who has been here with us. And I have to say, I am a proud New Yorker. This city is my home. We all love this city. And to have this kind of legislation emanating from the cultural capital that is New York is outstanding. And I do believe that we are going to get this done through all of your commitment and leadership. Danny, thank you so very much.
And indeed, we do thank you, Danny, because Danny really pushed for this hearing to take place. And I have to tell you, I have two more questions, but I had to truly tell you that I've been in the council for 10 years and I had to be hard-pressed to think about a hearing that we had, where we had so many people from so many spheres of life with so much expertise, as you just mentioned, as we did hear from you today. So I want to thank you. Give yourself a round of applause, and you can really clap now. You can really clap now. But I did have two questions. I did have two questions. And I know Councilmember Drum is going to be happy to announce. Don't mention who it was, but we have a good announcement for you. I did want to ask you, Professor, and I was very intrigued that your specialties during the Cold War. Why do we keep, what's the impetus for us to wanting to create bigger bombs? I mean, if, we're going to create a bomb that does 3,000 times more than what we saw during World War II? What are we going to do next? Five times, 5,000 more? I mean, like, we're beyond. I just don't get it. And then it's so expensive. Why, is there anything? Why do we keep? I don't believe history repeats itself. People repeat history. What is it about? There has to be a mentality that we have. And what is that? What is the argument that we have in our minds?
Well, I think the argument changed. That sometimes during the Cold War, it was that, you know, the Soviet Union was going to develop bigger bombs, so we had to do it first. Sometimes it was that if we only had enough weapons, it would deter the other side from ever using theirs. Sometimes it was the hope that if we built bigger bombs, we would make the Soviets spend themselves into self-destruction, which in part, the US did. So there's always a new excuse. But there's a kind of, if you have them, then the military and the arms producers think, you know, we need more. We need bigger for the business. For the businesses, it's incredibly profitable for the military. It's status and prestige. So there's this perverse logic. You always have to have more, even if you never use them.
And so what's the excuse now?
I wouldn't claim to speak for what Trump has in his mind with this expansion. We certainly hope he will never use them, but it's really terrifying because...
Then my last question was regarding to broken arrows. And by that, I mean missiles that had gone rogue. And I know we have a few out there. What are the chances that that would happen again? And what, to your knowledge, what is being done about those nuclear warheads that are still out there? That, you know, jet plane was shut, not shut down, but malfunctioned. I know we have nuclear warheads on the sea. Do you know anything about?
There have been serious nuclear accidents. There have been plane crashes. There's been no, you know, major contamination or explosion as a result. But these certainly have happened. There is a danger that they will happen. That's why I think, you know, only total nuclear disarmament. If you can't get everybody to stop, then those who have them will want more. New powers will do it or will come very close. There are several countries that have what is called the Japanese option. They have essentially the technology and some enrichment, and they could build a bomb pretty quickly. Most of them have not so far. But until you really get the nuclear powers to abolish nuclear weapons, we're in a very dangerous situation. Most of the other countries in the globe around the world are in favor of abolishing nuclear weapons. It's only those who have them that want to keep them.
So before I turn it to the co-chair to close today, I want to thank all the staff. Really put a lot of work. They debriefed us. They prepare us. Come on, you could give it up for them, too. They did a fabulous job. And I want to say that we're going to get this bill to the finish line. And the fact that the administration came in, and they came in, they are the total end. Basically, we just got the signal, it's going to happen. We're going to get in the right agency. So do be expecting that. But with that, to my co-chair, thank you. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart, for being a champion. This is not a fad for you. This is a point of conviction in your heart, your man of principle. And for the next generation of young people, I remember being a little kid, living in LA, and they used to do those drills, which, when I was a little kid, I said, "Well, wait a second. You know, be under the desk, atomic bomb explodes here. We're going to be dead. This ain't going to help me." But we did live under that fear, that constant fear. And that was part of our discussions as a little kid. May we live one of these days in a generation where kids won't have to speak of the potential dangers that could occur as a result of nuclear warheads. So thank you. And with that, I turn it over to the co-chair.
Thank you very much. I remember finding myself underneath a desk one time, too. And that was when a plane broke,